I took it upon myself to sit at the big boy table for a change.
I, uh, two, my first two years, I sat in that corner down where you did. I only just realized that that, I realized last meeting that it has no arms. And then I only just realized it's two inches lower than all the rest is.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you know, there are no lollipops outside. No lollipops, cocaine.
I, I ate most of it last time I was here.
How do we entertain children when they come and yell at us?
We have the sunshine fund.
Consider it filed.
Can't call Jean.
The mics are hot, so.
But she probably won't answer.
Hmm, I, I, I think she's good. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Hey, I'm doing a, I'm, there's a, there's a fundraiser. It's for a beautiful.
Okay.
So, I'm, so me and Jim are already, uh, it's twelve dollars for a dozen crispy doughnuts. So we bought twenty-four doughnuts for the DPW.
Okay.
We want to get twenty-four, we want to get twelve more for here.
Okay.
So if you guys, I'll put in the twelve dollars.
Okay, just let me know. Okay, twelve dollars, that's fine.
Whenever you get it.
Yep. Um, wait, what was I looking at here? I want to look at some. Oh, well, here we go. All right, one more minute. Where? Dave, you could send that to them. I took a picture too, you could send that to them.
Okay, I should make sure.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Uh, before we begin, uh, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first to start off, I'd like to make a motion to, um, open up our work, our combined work session business meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Kane, the deputy mayor, uh, Mayor Jim Galliano could not make it tonight because he is down in Atlanta, uh, with his family, taking a, a vacation and probably watching the Atlanta Braves beat the New York Mets like they usually do. As well as doing some other things. Rich Gayard could not make it tonight. Um, so it's just the three of us along with Doris. So, without further ado, the first thing up on the agenda is public comment. And, um, is there anyone here that would? So we have public comment in the beginning. We also have public comment at the end of the meeting. So, um, if you'd like to make a statement or a comment, um, just please come up to the podium and announce your name and your address.
Barbara Gasta, Nineteen Homeland Avenue. Um, many of the residents came out last month. And we talked about traffic on Hudson Street, Mountain Road, River Avenue. We talked about the noise. And, uh, there were a lot of, um, suggestions made, um, as to what we could do to resolve some of these issues. But the one thing that was not even broached was enforcement. We have a full-time police department. Um, we have, we can put stop signs on every corner in this village, which I would hate to see, and I certainly would hate to see flashing stop signs. I have four on my corner. Um, without enforcement, we, I think it's all for, for naught. I would like to see a, um, something forthcoming, um, to tell us how we're actually going to address the situation. And we seem to have a, an opportunity right now because 218 is closed. We have the thoroughfare down Mountain through Hudson Street, down River Avenue, and the school's going to be opening. This seems to me like an opportunity for us to take a look at what's going on and, and address it maybe on a small scale before 218 is repaired and we have to address it, um, from that direction. So I would hope that, um, this isn't just going to be about, you know, eliminating parking spots and, um, stop signs and, um, and, and writing things on our roads. Those things are all, all part of a picture maybe, but, um, without some significant, um, action in terms of, um, enforcement, I, I just, you know, it's just kicking the can down the road, I, I think. And for, for, um, you know, I'm on Homeland and I don't have a, a traffic problem on Homeland. I think most people are rather respectful on Homeland. Um, I don't see people, you know, um, flying down that street at all. But what the residents are putting up with on River Avenue is truly, um, unacceptable, in my opinion. I think we need to, to get behind those people. They all came out last month. And, um, um, I thi- I think the elephant in the room at that meeting was enforcement. So, um, I, I think it needs to, the answer needs to be, um, more comprehensive. Thank you.
So Barbara, just to, just to keep you updated, pursuant to that, to our last meeting, um, I know, um, the mayor has met with the residents on, on River Avenue, went over it, has also spoken to the chief. And I don't want to let the cat out of the bag of when the enforcement is going to happen, but enforcement will be happening. We know it's two parts. We know it's the part, part one is taking the parking space away. Maybe, uh, making, uh, I always forget the name of the roadway when you go down. Churchill Road. Making that one way, doing those things, but as a portion of it is the enforcement. So, and just like Rick Joy brought up last, last month in regards to the noise, um, same thing. But what I don't want to do, and that's in coordination with the chief, and the chief is already moving on it. What I don't want to necessarily do is let everyone know when it's going to happen. We completely understand that. But people, and, and by the way, and, and I totally understand where you're coming from. We, we support the residents on, on River Avenue there. And just, just, there has to be a recognition to a certain extent that, yes, we're a full-time police department. We have one person on all the time. I'm not saying that that's an excuse, but what, what we're going to do is we're going to end up using our full-time and we'll, and we'll bring in our part-time, uh, officers to enforce too. So there's going to be a mixed bag of things. So we're going to, there'll be some testing, uh, in regards to that. And, and chief, if there's any, anything else that you'd like to add? Just don't give the dates.
No, I think that's part of it. It's not part of the discussion at all. And, um, that really is what, um, I, that's.
Yeah, under- understood, understood.
Thank you.
It's Bruce.
It's Bruce, not Churchill, yes.
Uh, just, just to reiterate, um, I actually was just recently in, sent an email to Mr. and Mrs. Kerschner because they were the ones that kind of got the ball rolling, um, just to, to let them know that we are actively enforcing it. And I actually, um, gave them a copy of the memorandum that I sent to my officers about, uh, enforcement and what's, what needs to be done during certain periods. So it is being addressed.
Yeah, because we kind of know the windows of time.
I understand, but like I said, it's just to confirm with them, especially, uh, they were the ones that brought this to our attention. It is being addressed.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you for bringing up. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Rosemary. Welcome. I live at Nine Mountain Road. Um, just, we've been in contact with the mayor about all of the damage that we had at our property. Basically, all the water is coming from the top of Mountain Road and landing in our property. And we have like fifty thousand dollars worth of damage. So every time it rains, we're losing more and more of our property. So, and we don't qualify for the funding, um, that RepCo had put out. I know that they are fighting to try to get the median higher, um, but we qualify for no funding for that storm at all, for the flood. So we're, we're, we're in a position. Um, your engineer did come to our property and we're waiting. By the end of this week, he's supposed to come up with some sort of an idea of what maybe the village could do to help us.
Yeah, and Jim, Jim advised us of, advised me of that and, and the board of his extensive conversations with you. And that Pittengaro and Deutsch came out and took a look at it. So totally under, totally understood. Unfortunately, I know you, you, um, your property took the brunt of it. Some of the other properties on the Boulevard, got some, some damage too. But at this point, we just, it's, it's, we'll do whatever we can. And let's just see what Pittengaro and Deutsch comes back with. But totally, Jim totally read us in on, on the position you're in. I know he was out there.
He, yeah, he was out there twice that night that it happened, the next day. And then, you know, facilitating having the engineer come, which is, is great. Um, the Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, USDA, yeah.
That's the one that has a, uh, individual residence, uh, damage threshold, correct?
Right. Uh, uh, from what I understand, I know Dave or, or Mike can speak to it a little bit too. I know that, um, the FEMA has not declared it an individual assistance, um, disaster. Yeah. Um, and I know USDA came out.
Yeah.
Because the village, um, asked them to come out to see if there were any programs, potential programs that would be applicable to your property. And from what I understand, the USDA, it will take about forty-five days for them to come back with their report to advise whether or not there's something there that can be done. So with them, at this point, we're in a, in a waiting pattern for them to come back with their, their report. Okay? But we'll keep you apprised if we hear anything. Um, and you can, and you can check in, you know, in another thirty, forty-five days.
So you, you weren't eligible for any of the original money that came from Hokel?
No.
Why?
Because we made too much.
They, they used means testing for that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's eighty-six thousand.
The Senate, what did Scoofus and Ryan have to say about that?
They are fighting every day. I mean, I've been in contact with them on a regular basis. I mean, I went there. I, and they've come to our property.
Yeah.
Um, the county exec came to our property.
Good.
You know, I mean, I'm doing everything. They still said to, excuse me, to apply for it, which we did because they're hoping that they can get the median higher.
Good.
But for a family of three, which we are, you can't make more than eighty-six thousand a year.
Right.
Which is, you know.
Yeah.
So from what I understand, a hundred and twenty-two people between Cornwall, Cornwall and Hudson, Highland Falls, and Monroe Woodbury only applied for that three million because you don't qualify. So, you know, I did, you know, everything that they suggested.
Yeah. Right. And I, and I know Jim has been in touch with, uh, Chris Eek, Assemblyman Eekes and, and Ryan and, and the county execs. So we'll do whatever we can. Just keep in tou- I'm sure you'll keep in touch with us. And as soon as we hear anything, we'll absolutely, you know.
Right, because we can't, to repair it right now, we need to know what could possibly be done on Mountain Road.
Right.
I mean, we got the estimates, you know, Pat Callahan came out within a couple of days, you know, and, you know, we, we need an excavation company to put, move the wall back.
Right.
I mean, it, it took all of our footings out, the fencing, and just undermined that whole wall along our whole property.
Well, that comes, and I know looking at your property, it comes around that curve too. So that's why it just came right over.
Came over, right, from up at the top.
Yeah.
And we, during Irene, did pay to have that wall fixed and better. We put eleven thousand dollars to do that. So that stood, except one row, and then it undermined everything.
Okay, well, um, listen, it's, um, I, I wish I can give you some better news, ma'am, but at this point, we're just kind of in a, you know, waiting, a waiting pattern. But we'll absolutely let you know.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Rob Kerschner, Nineteen River. Um, I came in late, but I caught Barbara's remarks. I'd just like to piggyback on those and to say thank you to the board. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the trustees. Thank you to the chief. Thank you to Dave Halverson. We did meet the morning after our meeting. A couple of little things that get done that might seem trivial, but to step in the right direction. And I know there's going to be ongoing meetings regarding speed limits and stop signs. And we did receive an email from the chief and we're very appreciative of that and all the work that's going to go into solving the problem. So I just wanted to take a moment right now to publicly thank everybody here for what they've listened to us about. And going forward, hopefully we can all solve a problem that's not just River, it's the village. But to us, it's in our backyard, so it's, it's very important. So for all those people that have helped so far, I just want to, on behalf of the, um, River Avenue residents, to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a public comment? Rick?
Rick Joy, one sixty-seven Hudson. Uh, I would just follow up on both of these issues. I, I think regarding, I'll start with Barbara's, um, issue first, um, uh, the noise and the speed. You know, the Sleep Act, I know, is, um, it's a state law, was passed by the New York State Legislature and, and, uh, passed into law by Governor Hokel. But I feel as though perhaps, uh, we're maybe drawing a line and, uh, between state law and local law. Maybe I'm wrong, but it could be that, uh, in terms of enforcement of the, um, unregulated exhaust, which has been addressed by the New York State Legislature, uh, that, uh, okay, I'll back up. And I'm saying, none of us want a police state. None of us want a police state. We want measured, we want the kind of community that we've always had, that we value. None of us want to be harassed, but by the same token, people are harassing us. We're, we're sort of being victimized. Um, and it's a cultural thing. And I don't know, maybe it comes from hip-hop. I don't know what it comes from, but there's something in the zeitgeist that's, uh, about noise. And, and, uh, noise is this expression of, uh, protest of against who knows what. I can't even define it, but it seems to be what everybody wants to do, make noise. And I think there needs to be a way, an enlightened way, to address it. And it could be, since it's a state law, perhaps we do need to involve, uh, in a measured way in partnership, uh, with Governor, with, with Senator Scoofus, uh, the New York State Police and nine W. I mean, the, the conduit for most of the loud noise, they come over the mountain and they used to come up 218 until that was stopped, uh, by an act of nature, uh, and it was an act of nature until the road reopened in Fort Montgomery. So now that that's reopened, this is the new, it's, it's sort of incrementally going in that direction. And eventually 218 will reopen and it'll be, it'll be back to what it was before this kind of blissful, um, uh, pause in, in loud noise. So I would say, maybe we should explore, uh, a partnership with, uh, with state and local. It doesn't always have to be on our plate. And I'll also follow up with Rob, what Rob said, and express my gratitude for, for the work that all of you are doing. I know you've got so much on your plate and I really, I, I'm reluctant to be a person that's going to say, but here's more. But I just feel like, as Barbara said, this is an opportunity. We should see it as an opportunity because there, nature provided a pause for us. And, and, and I think we should try to figure out how to use that to our advantage. The other thing on, uh, regarding, uh, Mountain Road and all of that terrible damage, you know, uh, the last storm, when the damage happened, there was, there seemed to be a promise from, from the village, the, Village Board that, uh, positive steps would be made to make improvements on the culvert, which seems to be basically the linchpin in finding a path for water to travel. And, um, and then I know the gas lines have gone in, but perhaps, you know, Mountain, Mountain Road is, is totally trashed right now, and maybe this is the time to make those culvert, um, improvements. So, um, anyway, that's it, that's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The culvert project.
Yeah, in fact, my, uh, Mike or Dave, in regards to this, I know Jim had brought, brought it up in regards to the culvert, uh, or culverts on, on Mountain. And that is the potential of expanding the size of the culverts, right? Because I know one is ribbed and they're going to turn it into a, a box culvert.
The big one.
The one we're replacing is old. It's been in the ground probably a hundred and twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
Mountain Road was spilt.
We're actually increasing the size of it.
Okay.
That did not fail during that storm. It was overrun. It didn't all fail.
Yeah.
It was, it's not designed for a, quote, thousand-year storm.
That, that's the project though, that's already been engineered and complete.
Engineered and it's in, uh, I believe it's in, just built, I should say, right now.
That was supposed to get done in the summer because of school, because it will require. Right, and because it may require closing the road, I believe. Is that correct, Dave? Complete closure?
It's going to require us closing the road.
I think we're going to have to swallow that bill.
Yeah, they have no choice.
I mean, I, you know, people are, you know, distressed, you know, I mean, it's like.
I was here to get a closure for a year.
Yeah, but the schools do.
Yeah.
We, yeah, we were twenty-two, three times now, I would say, we, we put in a bill of like thirty, forty grand every time we get a thousand-year storm.
Yeah, we can't just keep repeating this. At some point, I mean, it's trash, everything.
Jim, when was that scheduled?
Steve, is it, is on his schedule? The box culvert.
Box culvert.
Waiting, waiting for it to be finished and then.
Oh, okay, so it's being built?
Yeah.
The culvert's being built.
It was designed by our engineer.
It's being built.
Of course, they had to go through all the, because it's all rock up there, so you can't just, you can't buy a box and set it in the ground.
Right.
Is that going to change what happens?
It'll help.
It's not going to change what happened down there.
No, but it can hurt. It got overrun. It didn't fail. This time it didn't fail, but, so now, then it's on to the, maybe it's on to the next one. The one at Boulevard then.
They don't have the Boulevard, it's going on. But didn't that also come down off Round Top?
Yep.
And I know they're still, they are looking at, we are looking at some more improvements along, along Mountain Road. Yeah, our, our engineers are looking at what else we can do. So this, it's, what I'm saying is it's not just the replacement of the, with the box culvert.
Right, there's a new, because women and men have got more funding, that's, that's a new project.
Potential funding. I mean, I know that the, the other one we got funding for, but potentially more funding. Yes, yeah, okay. Okay, um, well, thank you very much for the, for the comments and.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, let's go to, and you guys don't have to say if you don't want to. It gets a little boring. Totally understood. Thank you for your time. Okay, let's start off with the, uh, reports. Uh, so let me start off with the monthly treasures report, department report. Oh, excuse me, let me back up, yeah. Uh, with respect to minutes, okay. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the August second, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes as presented. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On, oh.
Do I have them in my packet?
I was not there at the special. Oh, you know what? We're going to have to put this.
Uh, yes, we'll have to table it.
We have to table this because, no, I was, yeah, I was not there, so we have to.
We don't have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum for that. That's why I wasn't, that's why I didn't think about it. Okay. So going to the monthly department reports. So the monthly treasurer's report for July. All right, the July monthly water open balance for the village was two hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty cents. The town was five hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-four cents totaling seven hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Warrant number eight, uh, for five hundred and fifty-five thousand, one eighty-six, fifty-three. I'm making a motion to approve the July warrant number eight and authorized payment, including prepayments totaling five hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-six point fifty-three. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With respect to the monthly revenue expenditures, uh, expenditure reports by funds. So the general fund revenue was three million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents, with expenditures of two million, three, two million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. As for the water fund revenue, that was one million, four hundred, four hundred and six thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, with expenditures of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and five cents. As for the sewer fund revenue, it was two hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, twenty-eight cents. The expenditures amounted to one hundred eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seven cents. Total receipts were five million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, thirty-six cents for a sixty-eight point seventy-four percent percentage in anticipated revenues and thirty-nine point seventy-six percent in anticipated expenditures through the end of July. Okay, the amount collected by the village taxes and penalties amounts to two million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents through July thirty-first. And the balance collected for the sewer capital currently is five hundred and ninety-six thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Okay, next up, we have, uh, Dave with the building department.
Okay, report for July twenty twenty-three, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department. Building permits issued, eleven. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued, six. On-site inspections, eighteen. Violation zero. Stop-work order, zero. Municipal searches, six. Solar panels, one. Fire inspections, two. Manny Carmona, Code Enforcement Officer.
Manny, anything to note? Okay. And did our new Assistant Code Enforcement Officer start or no?
Not official, starting with me and doing some shadowing and learning, but not official.
Okay, that's what I thought. I saw, I saw him with you today doing some shadowing work, correct? Very good. Okay, so it, it, we're, we're a few weeks out then. Okay, all right, very good. Any questions aboard for Manny? Okay, next up, we have the fire, uh, fire company report. That's, is that me or is that you? That's me, okay. Okay, so the July twenty twenty-three report for the fire department with ex, with respect to events. EMS calls, there were eight of them. Structure fire, one mutual aid to Cornwall, there were two. One hazardous material. one hazardous material spill, 15 flooding conditions, three automatic alarms, one rescue, two power lines down, two rubbish fires, one standby for a storm, one apparatus station maintenance, two meetings, one work detail, two drills, for total events, total events were 41. The chief notes that boat 416 is back in service, engine 412 is back in service, it had been out of service for four months, waiting for parts for repair. Emergency vehicle response has completed most of their field work for the assessment of the fleet. They'll come back in the near future to assess engine 412, and we can expect a report and recommendation in September. And the fire chiefs are working with the fire commissioners to establish a bylaws for the fire department. And respectfully submitted, Charles Quinn. Chief, anything to note? Okay. Any questions, the board? Very good, thanks, chief.
Oh, Mike Wilber did come back and he's done his review on 412, so that...
Oh, okay. Okay, good. All right. Next up, we have the police department. Bill?
The Cornwall on Hudson Police Department Monthly Police Report, July 1st, 2023 through 31st, 2023. There were 467 total calls for service. As far as felonies, there were two calls for grand larceny. Misdemeanors and violations, there were two fraud or identity theft calls, one pedit larceny, and one harassment or aggravated harassment. There was one misdemeanor arrest. In terms of vehicle and traffic, there was one personal injury accident, three property damage accidents, seven traffic summonses issued, four traffic warnings issued, four parking summonses issued, five traffic enforcement posts, two speed or radar sign postings. Noncriminal activity, there were 12 fire response calls, four domestic incidents, nine alarm response calls, one noise complaint, five suspicious incident calls, one animal complaint, and three disorderly persons calls. Departmental assists, the village PD assisted the town police department nine times, 14 times they assisted EMS, other agencies once, other police agencies once, performed 10 welfare checks, assisted two, five citizens, and no assistance to other COH departments. The Cornwall and Hudson Police Department requests a formal COH village board resolution to transfer approximately $850, which was received as a police department donation from the Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce, from the COH Village Gifts and Donations Line, A2705.0, to the Police Department Expense Line, A3120.4. I will make a motion to that effect right now. Is that something that we had discussed and wished to do, or should we not make a motion to that effect right now? Let me finish reading the report. During the month of July 2023, Cornwall on Hudson participated in Orange County Stop DWI grant funding enforcement, respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
That's the transfer, that's the $850 transfer we were talking about.
Is that from the general fund?
On the bottom page six.
Yes, so, yes, yes, that's what we were talking about before.
Is it definitely? It's, I know it's the same amount, but...
That's what Doris just said. What page?
It's on the bottom of page six.
Okay.
And then goes to the top of page seven.
Got it. So Bill, if you want, you know what, I have the...
You've got the resolution.
Yeah, I've got the resolution, it's got the line numbers, but we can knock that out right now. So I'm gonna make a motion to transfer from the general fund revenue, line A2705, to general fund expense line A3120.4, in the amount of $850. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And this is money that was raised from the car show that was intended for, was used for beautification purposes, I believe, in landscaping and making sure that our police department here in the village is welcoming and visual presence. And that's what the money is from, and that's what the money was for.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, Dave, any other comment?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, chief. And thanks for beautifying the police department.
Chief, am I right that that's a high number of total calls for service, right? The fire response and the EMS and welfare checks really spiked, yeah.
That's why there was such a substantial amount of welfare checks increase, as well as the EMS calls.
Chief, what were the two grand larceny? What type of grand larceny?
You know, I was just thinking that, as trustee Brain was reading that, I could find out for you, I'm just trying to recall it myself.
The prior month where the catalytic converters were still, right? That was June.
That was the, I believe that was during June.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, next up, we have Public Works Department. Dave?
Department of Public Works, July 2023. Trash collected for the month, 127 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 24 tons. Guard waste collected for the month, 120 yards. Repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles and equipment continues. Blacktop patching, ground maintenance of village-owned properties, sweeping of streets. We've been making temporary repairs to Mountain Road, Maple Road, and the Boulevard due to the July 9th storm. Pad has been put in place for the pavilion at the riverfront. DP notes, DPW assisted police department with traffic control for the 4th of July parade, as well as blocking Hudson Street for these events at the town hall until the fireworks were over. We had to rent an excavator to make the temporary repairs. We are pushing to have CSX pave the areas they used for staging during the need for repairs, from train tracks washing out during the storm of July 9th as well. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works. And you might be able to enlighten us on Jim's meeting with CSX.
So the mayor had a meeting with CSX, or at least, actually, they were down on the site. So we were asking CSX to replace the area going from the railroad tracks nearest the gazebo, I know it's also called the shelter, I believe, all the way to Dock Hill, potentially getting an entire area repaved. There's no commitment from CSX yet, but from what Jim advised, and Dave, I know you were with him, they were receptive, is the best...
The conversations I've had with the rep from CSX, as well as the mayor, I think we're gonna be compensated for the damage that was done. I'm actually meeting with the representative tomorrow from HillCon to go over the property and just confirm. I gave them a cost estimate based on their quote that they have with the county, but the rep wants to come and look at it himself. He probably Googled it and wants to see it.
And I know in addition to that, part two of that was having a better, not relationship, communication between CSX, yeah, CSX and us for the next go-around when this happens. So, thank you very much for that, Dave.
One other item to add to Dave's report, he's asking the board to declare the following vehicle surplus as to list for sale. A 2003 Dodge Dakota with the long VIN numbers and 94,746 miles. So we will do that.
I will amend that just to have the VIN number ending in 2214. Now we don't have to read the whole thing.
As per document.
As per document. Dave, you can, I'll second that?
Yep. Okay, we make a motion that we declare that 2003 Dodge surplus for sale. Motion?
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. Okay. All right, Bill, next up, Water Department.
Village of Cornwall on Hudson Water Department, July 2023 Monthly Report. Monthly production was 21,218,000 gallons, with a daily average of 684,000 gallons. We collected 65 samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. In terms of treatment, Black Rock Water Treatment Plant remains offline, awaiting the New York City, New York State DEC Speedy's permit. We repaired the zinc orthophosphate leak at Jackson Avenue Treatment Facility. Transmission and distribution, 86 utility markouts were completed. A boil water advisory was issued and subsequently rescinded for the Boulevard. Water shut off at property owner's requests at 416 Hudson Street, 21 Academy Avenue, 5 Ferguson Road, 5 Russell Street, 7 Peter Scott Drive. Water service was installed at 203 and 205 Boulevard as a result of the July storm damage, July 9th storm damage. There was a water main valve installed at Boulevard, also a result of the July 9th storm damage, and a leak was repaired by the property owner at 134 Willow Avenue. Meters, the Water Department read commercial meters, read town and village residential meters, 10 final water meter readings were completed, 49 residential water meters were replaced, 13 water line inspections were completed, and three miscellaneous repairs were completed. Property maintenance, routine property mowing, dam maintenance, and July 9th storm cleanup is ongoing. In terms of July 9th storm damage, Pex Road leading to the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant was washed out with the stream bank erosion. Maple Road Access Road was washed out with stream bank erosion. 1896 10-inch water main sustained damage on the Boulevard near Continental Road. Temporary repair has been made. Additional stream bank erosion has exposed this water main at another location northeast of the damaged portion, and the Catskill Water Treatment Plant sustained interior flooding. Sincerely, Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Superintendent.
So Mike, in regards to the second last item there, the 10-inch water main, you're saying additional has exposed, additional stream bank erosion has exposed the water main at another location? So when is that, when do we anticipate repairing that?
Is that the bridge, Dave, or Mike?
No, it's actually, the portion that's exposed in the, in the stream is in the village just past Maple Road on the Boulevard.
Oh.
Near the area of 37 Boulevard. It's right on the edge of the stream bank. We're gonna put some sand around it, encapsulate it in concrete, probably within the next two weeks, to protect it from any future damages.
The temporary repairs, the diversion around to the other pipe, right?
Correct.
And when does the temporary no longer become temporary, or remain temporary?
After FEMA comes in, takes a look at everything and decides what, whether they're gonna restore it to pre-disaster condition, or possibly do some hazard mitigation.
And last thing, Mike, in regards to both Pex Road and Maple Road access washed out, is that internally, you guys can repair that, correct?
Actually, the Pex Road, in meeting with the USDA, they seem to think that that area up there would qualify for funding. There's the village's old reservoir is there, from way back in the 1890s. They think that they can provide funding for removal of the old dam that's there, that's currently falling apart, and do some stream bank stabilization along there.
Okay.
And in terms of the Maple Road, we're doing temporary repairs.
Yeah.
And if we get more funding, then we'll be able to do more permanent.
So Mike, that's all gonna be part of that 45-day, that report that's supposed to be issued in about 45 days, correct?
Correct.
Okay, excellent.
The pressure tank on Maple Road is, there's the temporary repair and then the longer-term part that we had to order, right? Is the temporary repair in place?
Yeah, that was completed about a month ago. We did lose power there, and it worked like it should. So, all right.
All right, last of the department reports, all right, the New Windsor EMS services, so for the month of July. Three new members, with respect to personnel, three new members applied and no new employees. Operations, there are 456 total dispatches, 100% of the calls were covered. This was the busiest month in their history, again. This is like the third time this has happened, three in a row, I think. 283 patients were transported, there are over 2,900 calls for the year. They're on track for 4,900 calls in 2023. There were 289 calls in New Windsor, 59 in Cornwall, and 20 to the village. Cornwall covered one call in Woodbury and 3M Highland Falls. The Windsor units covered 13 calls in Cornwall and Cornwall and Hudson. Cornwall units covered 10 calls in New Windsor. Mutual aid ALS standbys provided 88 times to various locations for private transport, non-emergency transport for residents. Okay, for response times, the average response time was 6 minutes 34 seconds in New Windsor, 5 minutes 51 seconds in Cornwall, and 4 minutes 57 seconds in Cornwall and Hudson. More operational, all the vehicles are in service, no accidents, new uniforms came in and are being utilized. As for administrative, the outside patio area at their station is coming along. The Cornwall AC station is having air conditioning issues. Temporary solution is in place until the unit can be fixed by the town. Issues remain with the Cornwall ambulance grant with Senator Schoofus's office, and they're awaiting a meeting with him. A $10,000 donation was received from Hudson Federal Credit Union to assist us in covering expenses. That's great. Cornwall Fund Drive will be commencing in September. Medicaid recertification is completed on time, and the updated narcotic plan submitted to New York State Department of Health and approved. This change will make our narcotic inventory system digital. And Vastar Brother Hospital continues to have doctors working weekly on their ambulances to help achieve the training of our providers. And last, 2024 New Windsor EMS budget will be submitted next week to the town of New Windsor, and that's Chief Michael Biggs. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to resolutions. So the first resolution we have listed is the Jackson Avenue PFOS Treatment Project. So before I read the resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, this is the one where the village submitted an application for water infrastructure improvement. That was completed by Pittengaro and Deutsch, and that was submitted last week, last week, two weeks ago, August 11th, correct? Okay. Okay. So anything else to add to that? All right, so resolution authorizing the village to fund the Jackson Avenue PFOS Treatment Project pursuant to the requirements of an agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. Whereas the Village of Cornwall on Hudson has submitted a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, a WeA funding application, honor before August 11th, request to 2023, requesting grant funding in the amount of $1,482,960 for the aforementioned project. And whereas it's desirable and in the public interest that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson participate in the aforementioned Water Infrastructure Improvement Act program. And whereas, the act program funds 60% of net eligible project costs for drinking water projects, such as the Jackson Avenue PFOS Treatment Project. And whereas, the act program requires that the village develop a plan of finance appropriating funding for the remaining 40% of the project costs. And whereas, the village mayor is the chief financial officer for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, and has the authority to make expenditures on behalf of the village, hold on, along with, with the approval of the Board of Trustees. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson authorizes the village mayor to sign the funding agreement with New York State EFC and associated documents, and authorizes appropriate, and appropriates a minimum of 40% of the project costs for Jackson Avenue PFOS Treatment Project. The source of these funds shall be consolidated, shall be the Consolidated Water District Fund and/or bonds, should additional financing be necessary. The maximum local contribution shall not exceed $988,640, based upon a total estimated project cost of $2,471,600. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, any discussion?
Yeah, just to, this is, this is our, is it necessary for us to comply with the federal requirements on PFOS thresholds, is that correct?
The new requirements that are being proposed by the federal government, they're not enacted yet.
Understood.
Any other caller you can add to it, Mike?
I'll just point out that Mr. Joy's point at the last meeting regarding the PFOS settlement with DuPont and 3M, the village is part of that class action suit, and we will be eligible for some of those funds when they become available.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. With that, since it's financing, the next resolution deals with, let's see, yes, deals with SECA. So along with the resolution that we just did, New York State SECA requires... So, along with the resolution that we just did, um, New York State SECA requires, um, the municipality to complete a environmental quality review. However, since this is a type-two action, um, a SECA review is not being required. So, let me just read this resolution. Okay. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson proposes to install granular activated carbon filtration at the Jackson Avenue Chemical Building Site. And whereas Title Six of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, Section six-one-seven point five, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA, provides that certain actions identified in subsection C of the section are not subject to environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Resolve that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby determines that the project is a type-two action in accordance with six NYCRR, Section six-seventeen point five C nine, which constitutes construction or expansion of a primary or accessory opportu, opportu, pertinent, right? Non-residential structure or facility involving less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area, and not involving a change in zoning or use variance, and consistent with local land use controls, but not radio communication or microwave transmission facilities, and therefore is not subject to review under six NYCRR, Part six-seventeen. I make that motion to approve this classification of Jackson Avenue as a type-two PFOS Treatment Plant. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Uh, just a question for the superintendent. Is, um, what will the facility, will it be visible from outside? What will it look like? Is it one of those big bulbous with the multiple?
No, they'll be housed inside. Right now, there's a, uh, two-story, uh, farm barn structure that'll be removed, and as I've instructed the, the engineers, that whatever facility we reconstruct there to have it look like a barn as well.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, next resolution, designated a village clerk as a village minority business officer. So, in accordance with New York State law, the village board has to designate a minority business officer when we are, are the recipient of funding, in this case, financial assistance from the Environmental Facilities Corporation. So, whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson proposes to, wait, I did this one? Where is this? Hold on. Where is that? Uh, you know, I'll just do it this one, yeah. Okay. Okay. As required by New York State law, the village board designates the acting village clerk, Doris Wickizer, as minority business officer, AKA MBO. Potential recipients of financial assistance from assistance from New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, are required to designate a minority business officer. The minority business officer must be an employee of the potential recipient. The designated individual must possess the necessary operational resources and authority to effectively administer EFC's programs related to minority and women-owned business enterprises, disadvantaged business enterprise, service-disabled veteran-owned business enterprise, and equal opportunity requirements. The minority business officer will be responsible for conducting good faith efforts to seek minority wi, MWBE and SDVOB prime contractors. Help contractors include certified MBEs, WBEs, and SDVOb's on their contracts, and monitor, track, and enforce compliance with the MBW, excuse me, MWBE, SDVOB, DBE, and EEO requirements for the recipient. The minority business officer is identified on the MWBE, DBE, SDVOB, EEO work plan, an EFC form required as part of the paperwork necessary for listing a potential project on EFC's intended use plan. So, I make the motion to approve the acting village clerk, Doris Wickizer, as the minority business officer. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I know what you're saying. Backwards, right?
Give me those letters back.
All right.
Three stooges.
Uh, no, right?
Something in there.
Um, okay. The sexual harassment policy, we have completed this now, after an extensive review by our council. So, because of that, I am going to make a motion to approve the sexual harassment policy, which was revised June of twenty twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
August.
Oh, uh, you, uh, when did you revise it? You revised August?
Friday, whatever.
Oh, okay. All right. I don't know why, yeah, okay, August. As revised by Joe McKay, our council, um, on, in August of twenty twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Now, that was long in coming. Okay. Okay. Village waterfront property. Okay. Uh, we're gonna take a look, we're gonna have, uh, a piece of the water, village, village's waterfront property assessed, um, taken a look at for the rental market value. So, I'm gonna make a motion to approve a contract with Goldman Appraisal Services Incorporated to evaluate the fair lease value of village property, which is located on the waterfront between the Cornwall Yacht Club and Dunnehugh Memorial Park, where you put in the kayaks, the beach there. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, records management, let's see, amount of pay, records, amount of village waterfront, got records, amount of pay, oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. So, this next resolution is regards to a pay increase for Barbara, who's our record management, uh, person. And right now, everyone is, the, the, pretty much the starting salary is seventeen dollars per hour. I believe she's at sixteen. Am I correct, Doris? Okay. So, we wanted to put her in line with the other employees. So, based on that, I'm making a motion to increase the hourly rate of the records management clerk to seventeen dollars per hour. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Increase general fund transfer, we already did. Okay. Accept the resignation of Anthony Galliano. So, with regret, uh, we received a letter dated August fourteenth from Anthony Galliano, who's been employed with the Water Department for eight years, correct, Mike? Okay. So, I will just read his letter. Please, to whom it may concern, please accept this letter as a formal notification that he's leaving me his position as a water maintenance worker as of August twenty-fifth of this year. Thank you for the opportunity you have given me over the last eight years. Working for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department has been a wonderful experience that has afforded many valuable opportunities to learn and grow. I'm extremely grateful to have been a part of this team. Sincerely, Anthony Galliano. So, with that, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of, of Anthony Galliano with regrets. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I understand he's been a very valuable member of the Water Department, and that he is, uh, moving to, uh, another opportunity.
Yep.
Very good. Good for him.
We'll miss him, that's for sure.
Yeah. No, absolutely.
Consensus.
Yes, very responsible individual. So, um, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we have to post for a vacancy for the water maintenance worker, since Anthony is leaving. So, I'm making a motion to authorize the Water Superintendent, Mike Trainer, to post for the position of water maintenance worker, as per the CES, CSEA contract. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I can see, okay. Moving along. Okay, appointment of Joseph McCormick. Okay, so, um, to heavy equipment operator. So, Joe McCormick works for DPW, no, Water Department, okay. And Joe's been with, Mike, go ahead, how long has Joe been with the department?
Joe's been with us since January of two thousand nineteen, but he's been with the village. Uh, he began his employment on the sanitation truck in July of two thousand sixteen.
With that, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Joseph McCormick to heavy equipment operator as per the specifications of the CSEA contract. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Mike, and why did, did this come open? Because I can't remember, did someone leave, or is this just a?
It's just an internal promotion.
Okay.
Um, and I just note that he, with this promotion, he'll be on probation for six months, as allowed through the Orange County rules and regulations.
Okay.
And you note here that he's one of the only two village employees with a Class A CDL?
Correct.
Any other comments? And, okay. So, I'll call the vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right. Let's move on to a next appointment, which is, uh, to a senior, senior motor equipment operator. So, mm, let's see, Andy's with the DPWS. I see Andy in the morning. Okay. So, this one, Dave, just give, give us a little background on this one?
Andy's been working for the Village DPW since two thousand twelve. And I believe it was two thousand fourteen, he attained his CDL license, became a, uh, motor equipment operator, and he's held that position since. It's time for a, give him a promotion.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Andy Stathis to senior motor equipment operator as per the specifications of the CSEA contract. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so that, now, we don't have to, we don't have to post a vacancy because of his?
Internal.
Okay. Got it. All right. All right. Now, accepting a donation, uh, for the ice house repair. So?
No.
No?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
It says roof here.
Yep. Okay. So, hold on one second. So, we received a letter from an individual, well-known individual in, in the village, advising us there were four anonymous individuals that would like to make a generous monetary donation to, to the village towards the preservation of the Dunnehugh Memorial, Dunnehugh Farm, Ice House, or blacksmith shop, and shed area, um, across from the barn. And they'd like to keep it preserved and to look as stately as the barn does right now. So, pursuant to our, um, and with huge gratitude, we would like to thank, thank those individuals, and thank the individual who wrote the letter advising of us, um, of that, of that donation. And pursuant to our donation policy, uh, let me make this motion. So, um, I will make the motion to accept a donation from the anonymous, anonymous individuals of fifty-six thousand dollars to repair the roof of the Ice House, Ice House at Dunnehugh Farm, and also to, um, direct the village clerk to prepare, to draft a written response advising the individual who submitted the letter that such donation was accepted pursuant to our, our donation policy. With that, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We labored over the donation policy. This is in keeping with it, uh, and it's a very generous, uh, move, and the fact that it is a directed donation, uh, bypasses my one concern about our donation policy, which was the idea of having, uh, un, undirected donations. But this is, this is very clearly for a specific purpose, that I think we're all, all behind. So, this is really, really generous and, and appreciated by the village board, and I imagine by the Donahue Committee as well.
Yes, and, and Bill and I spent many, um, many discussions about monetary donations, and we split it, so to speak. Bill agreed that we would take monetary donations, and, and I agreed that we would take, uh, directed, uh, monetary donations. So, it, it, it all worked out in the end, and, uh, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank the spokesperson who wrote the letter, um, for the anonymous individuals, and please thank them personally for us, as we won't know who they are. So, that being said, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, approve the, the Ice House repair. Now, where do I have that one? Yep. Now, we're just, I am always so used to looking at this. Start, um, okay. All right, accepting a bid for Ice House repair. So, ooh, I can read this whole thing. Oh, it's not that bad. Okay. All right, Joe.
I don't even read the contract.
No, I'm just looking, I'm just looking through this. Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion, hold on. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid from One Time Carpentry to repair the roof of the Ice House at Dunnehugh Farm, subject to one-time carpentry entering into a contract with the, with the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, just to clarify what we're voting on here, we're voting, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract based on the bid that was received from One Time.
Yes, correct. And that bid was dated four twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, and in the amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And I know, Joe, you wanted to add some color to that, because these were, these were the same, the same company that did the repairs to the barn. They were on the county, they're on the county list, they have a contract with the county, but don't have a contract with the village.
Right, so we're piggybacking.
Right.
They're, they were a successful roofing bidder with Orange County. We're allowed, because we adopted our law a couple of years ago, we're allowed to piggyback off that contract, and that, that bid award specifically says other municipalities in Orange County can piggyback off the award. So, that's why we're able to do it. Of course, they just have to comply with the bid that they won from the county. So, if we didn't go the extra step and have them confirm or execute an agreement with us, we wouldn't be in privity with them. So, basically, the contract says, and this is one they signed for the last job, that they agree that they will uphold everything in the bid award from the county for the village, the warranty, the quality, materials, et cetera.
Indemnity, insurance.
Correct. And just to be clear, we'll wait until we get the signed contract back from the bidder, make sure they haven't made any changes, or they don't want any changes, and then the mayor can sign it. I'm assuming, since they didn't make any changes the last time, they won't make any changes this time. And rather than wait till September meeting, we, as long as there are no changes, the mayor can execute the contract that I prepared.
Excellent. All right. All in, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Dave? I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, we needed, we needed three. Okay. All right, moving on to other business. Bill, Dunnehugh Committee report.
I'm pleased to report that, uh, the Dunnehugh Committee and the Village of Cornwall and Hudson are receipt of a very generous, anonymous contribution to repair the Ice House roof. In addition, uh, I'm pleased to report that we've approved the, uh, one-time carpentry bid to make the roof repairs for, at an amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. The, um, in case anyone noticed, as I did, uh, so, I don't have, I don't have a formal report from the Committee. They met this, um, I think they met last Tuesday, and I was unable to attend, and I have an email out to them asking for minutes or an update, but I don't have any. In terms of just, uh, what's going on at the farm, um, there is a, um, you may have, I noticed that there were tree service trucks parked down there. That was, uh, an arrangement while the tree service trucks were temporarily in the village doing tree service work to keep the lines clear and so on, and possibly to, uh, work with storm damage, I think. I'm not positive. Uh, Mr. Hallison may know. The community garden asked, uh, offered them, and cleared it with the mayor, to allow them to park there in exchange for wood chips for- The community garden asked, uh, offered them, and cleared it with the mayor, to allow them to park there in exchange for wood chips for compost for the, for the community garden.
It's always a good deal.
There was no storm damage, uh, from, at, at Donahue Farm, from the, uh, from the July 9th storm, I did have that report from previous. But, nothing else, garden is going, gangbusters, I, um, uh, flew a drone over there the other day and it all looked lovely and everything is manicured as, you know, we've been mowing the, the event space. And I'm sorry, what's the, the next event at the, oh, well, there's the pilot wedding program is happening this Saturday, right? And then the, um, the next film at the farm?
September 30th, Old School. I believe the, the Donahue Farm Committee is gonna be holding some sort of an Oktoberfest there.
Yep.
Similar to the event they had last year, so, I would think the next meeting, the, the board's going to have to approve a one-day permit for beer and wine sales.
Uh, and I guess it's the Donahue Committee now. So, there was also the, um, the Special Events Committee worked with the Cornwall Youth Committee and held a fundraiser at, um, Donahue Memorial Park, showing the film Karate Kid on this past Saturday, right, Friday, Saturday?
Friday.
Friday. Um, was that, how, how did that go? I was unable to attend.
That was, it was great, yeah.
I think there was about 200 people there.
Yeah, it was beau- it was a beautiful night, too.
Yeah.
Um, wine, beer, and they had food trucks and, and the high school football team and other, uh, committees were there selling candy and other stuff, so. No, it was pretty well attended, it was, it was great, really good.
Um, no other, no other details on, uh, the Donahue Committee from me.
Okay, how about the EV charging station?
I have, um, I met with representatives from Scenic Hudson who went to the sites for electric vehicle chargers that we're proposing to have installed in the village, funding permitting. They identify, they looked at the sites that we had provisionally identified and they recommended, um, slight adjustment to one of them down at Donahue Memorial Park, uh, just adjacent to the parcel owned by the village that sits between the kayak launch and, uh, the, um, it's in the southernmost parking lot, um, against one side of that parking lot, the southern edge of that parking lot. And then out here, uh, behind Village Hall and then at the municipal lot. Uh, in addition to them, I discussed it with Real Term Energy, which is the firm that's, uh, coordinating a turnkey installation of EV chargers for the town at Town Hall. So, we looked at them, they gave us, um, a scope of work and a quote based on what we had discussed, and Central Hudson, you know, looked at that and said that there would be no prob- or they didn't look at the quote, but they looked at the proposal overall and said there'd be no problem accommodating, uh, electric supply to those locations with meters and all the required hardware. So the next step there is for me to compile the scope of work and the quote that I've received, as well as any input from Central Hudson. Also, Central Hudson wrote to me and, and talked about the EV-ready program, which is potentially, uh, available to help fund a, a large percentage of the cost of such installation. I do have to check to see whether we need to, whether we can find and need to engage with any other bidders or, or, um, firms that might provide the turnkey service that Real Term is, is bidding on or quoting for. I just need to make sure I understand the details of that. So, we've had some discussions, everybody seems on board with wanting to do it, it seems like there's a, uh, large percentage of the funding is likely to be, um, provided by Central Hudson's program for, specific to this purpose, so we'll have more news, uh, when I get that compiled and.
Great. Very good. Last thing under other business is the proposed amendment agreement with the Stowell Trailhead. I know that, uh, Joe McKay and, and Bill are still in discussions and they're gonna be meeting to go over some final revisions to it, um, and also to discuss it with, um.
Scenic Hudson.
Scenic Hudson, yes. I did wanna mention in addition, and under other business, um, the mayor was advised that Vet Rep Theater, um, is, they'll probably be coming next month, but is looking to potentially use, um, the Dunnyu Park, um, the fa- uh, wait.
Farm.
The farm, farm, Dunnyu Farm, um, for their festival, not this year, it's next year, one year out in October. Vet Rep Theater is, uh, a nonprofit, um, the, uh, nonprofit theater, it's primarily, uh, uh, performances and art and, and music formed by, uh, veterans. And they had a festival last year that was out in.
Sugarloaf.
In Sugarloaf, I, I actually attended, it was a, it was a two-day, two-day festival, I went for one day. It wa- it was excellent, and as you know, they own the property up, uh, where Shadane Circle is there, uh, I mean, at the Shadane Properties.
Shadane House.
Shadane House. So they're looking to have it here. So, they were just giving us the heads up, I believe they're gonna be making that presentation or coming to speak to us at our work session, um, in September. Some other FYIs, um, the New York Forward grant submissions, they were due this past, uh, Friday. I, I don't have, I don't have a readout, but I know there were at least four, I know at least two in the village. I believe there's at least a, two or three more in, in the town, I don't have the total, I don't have the total amount. But, the next meeting of the, um, local planning committee is going to be on September 6th from 5:30 to 7:30, and that's when the projects will be discussed. Let's see, CSX, we already went over that. Female, let's see, the Pavilion, the Pavilion Project, that's underway. I believe was the entire, the kit, was the entire kit delivered or just a portion of it?
Yes.
Okay.
It was delivered, we had to get some assists getting it unloaded, but, uh.
Okay, and that's probably gonna be completed by, when do you think, um, Dave?
We're not sure.
By the, by the end of the fall?
Well, I mean, once they start it, it's.
I, I should, uh, in a, in a week or so, I should have a better idea when they're gonna get ready to start.
Okay, all right. Let's see. And, and with that, you know, I know, Dave, I believe there's gonna be 12, 12 picnic tables? Around there?
That's what I purchased.
Okay, all right. So we were, I think some people are concerned, um, how it's gonna be used. Uh, the board has gotta discuss, just like we did with the, with the gazebo, if it's gonna be used for, by large groups, you know, family gatherings, um, community events, that sort of thing. We'll come up with a policy to reserve it, determine whether or not, um, I believe for the gazebo, we have, we charge, depending upon the size, we charge a certain amount, minimum amount. So, that is gonna be considered in the, in the, probably by next month. Yeah, let's see, USD, that's it. Okay, before we go to board comments, we have our one last, uh, time for public comment. Rick, did you wanna say something?
Sure, thank you. Okay, Rick Joy, 167 Hudson. Uh, I'm just gonna go down my notes, but the, uh, maybe educate me, because I, I don't really remember, the sewer capital fund, uh, that you mentioned in the treasurer's report. I mean, I know that that was initiated way back when, when I was trustee by Mark Etzel, just to put this surcharge to kind of bolster, uh, I just, the, the dividing line between town and village, you know, uh, I always sort of abstractly felt that like the village had the water and the town had the sewer and, uh, so, but we seem to administer the sewer capital fund. And I'm just wondering what, what the nuance of that is, or, or is that just like ongoing, like, uh?
Well, this one, this one, Rick, started, this one started a few years ago, I'd say probably like five years ago, somewhere around there.
Collapse of the sewer plant.
After the collapse of the sewer plant.
Right.
So this.
Extended the walls.
Right, so, so the town got all the state, state funding, so we realized that we gotta start saving up money because they're gonna come to us for our large payment, so that's what this, that money, that's what it's going to.
But that's on us as a village and not on the town?
Forty percent. It's, yeah, it's, it's based on a percentage with this.
We have an IMA.
Right.
With the town.
Okay.
And we pay a certain proportion, I don't.
I see.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, it's a savings account.
Okay, no, I get it.
Or Sewer Bill's.
Perfect. I just wondered, but, that's great, thank you for answering that. Uh, on the police report, uh, the calls, there was, and it kinda went in passing about, uh, are, is there sort of a little spike in catalytic converter thefts?
It ha- there was. Chief?
It was a one-night spree.
We had, we had, um, two up in Cliffside Park and one on the boulevard. It's actually been pretty rampant through the county at that time. We've been working with, uh, Village of, Village of Highland Falls, two had several, uh, that happened that evening, so we're working with them. I'll get more information.
Okay, thanks, I, I, I would just offer up this idea that I, I think I had read somewhere that, um, areas in the country that really have a lot of these thefts, uh, maybe it's out in California, or there are some spots in the country that are really targets, a lot of catalytic converters get ripped off. And, um, something that's been done, which I thought was really ingenious, was, uh, people are spraying catalytic converters with dayglow, high-temperature paint, and it renders the fencing of the cata- it, no one's going to buy a catalytic converter with dayglow paint on it. And, um, I mean, I, I'd need to look into it a little more, but it seems like if that's true, if that, if that basically renders the resale of, 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 of a stolen catalytic, um, like, then maybe we could offer it as a public service, people could come by, put the car up, boom, on the roof, so you don't see the catalytic converter from the, and, and spray it dayglow pink, and off you go, and no one's gonna steal your catalytic converter, because when the guys get underneath, they're gonna say, oh yeah, we can't, we can't sell that. Uh, that was just something that I had read about or heard about at some point, I thought this is ingenious, because it's taking this thing that's really expensive and it makes it useless to a thief, you know?
I think they primarily, Chief, my wrong, they primarily target Hondas, is that right?
Yeah, Hondas.
They're easy.
Acura, Acura, which is also high-end.
They cut and took that catalytic converter.
Yeah, I know, it's simple.
With a, with a, uh, battery-powered sawzall.
Is it for the resale value, or is it for the?
Yeah. For all the heavy metals, yeah.
It's got platinum in it, right?
I'm gonna consider, because I've heard that it's, it's, it renders it like uns- unsaled on the, on the fencing work. So just a little suggestion box thing. The other thing is, uh, the tilt-con, uh, grading of, of the area that was destroyed by the work there. Maybe the village could kind of massage that a little bit and get a little grading done on some of those parts, like that area that sort of really slopes up, that, that, where the major piles of debris were. Maybe they could sort of grade that down a little bit, because it's, it's a little funky. I don't know, maybe if they're, they're repaving it anyway, maybe they could, so there's that. The other thing is on the PFAS, um, so, we stand to gain, uh, 1.42 million, uh, uh, from this application grant. Uh, I thought, I, I heard that correctly, but then the village is gonna be on the hook for 40% of, of the total cost. So, I mean, is that something, and hopefully, um, uh, class action, uh, thank you, I'm glad that's in motion and, and down the road, who knows how long that'll all take to get a settlement, but in the meantime, we're possibly gonna use a bond, uh, for that 40%, because that's still, 40% of 1.4, uh, 2.5 million was the original, uh, cost for the filtration, and if, if the app, if the grant is 1.42, it's still a sizable amount of money that we're gonna have to cough up.
It is, and luckily enough, I think we, bonding-wise on the water department side, we're in a very good position. I think we only have one bond out, um, that's about how much left?
Only one long-term bond, it's about $800,000.
Compared to.
So we shouldn't have to bond, do you, you don't think for the balance, or we're going to have to bond?
Well, first we gotta get it, but, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
So it's a little pie in the sky, but, um, yeah, we'd have, we'd, we would probably have to bond it out.
Yeah. Yeah. But the, um, but the, the approach for filtration is granulated carbon, is that what I heard?
Right now, that's the most effective approach.
Because I know, I have granulated carbon filter under my sink, you know, so is it safe then to assume that that granulated carbon filter is removing PFAS?
I can't speak to that, because I don't know what filter you have.
Well, they used it on, uh, on Washington Lake, right?
They did, yes.
I don't know if it's the same stuff that's in the refrigerator.
That's a pretty good fil- I mean, uh, Seagull 4, it, it, that's a great filter, it's been around for a long time, and it's granulated carbon, so I'm gonna s- hope that that is helping me, but the other thing, just a point of information, is last Sunday in the New York Times, there was a, in the magazine section about PFAS, and, uh, it's pretty amazing, and actually talks about how, uh, I mean, it's obviously, it's in so many provinces, and, and water really only accounts for about 20% of exposure of PFAS. When you consider all the other household cleaning products and, uh, non-stick cookware, and, I mean, it's, it's basically, it's basically in so much of what we do, you know, in our society, but 20% is 20%, so, and, and if we can address that, certainly we should. And then, uh, um, uh, my next, uh, point was the, uh, that section of riverfront property. Okay.
And you were gonna make that up.
So, like, to what end, number one, and is this like a dredging Riverkeeper docking thing? What is this, is this, uh?
No.
Is this a Ferris wheel? What is this, is, uh? Okay.
No. Yeah.
Is this health and fitness condos, what are we talking about?
No, thi- this is just to determine the, a similarly situated property that, uh, what the rental value would be, because right now, that piece of property is rented out to the Cornwall Yacht Club.
Ah. Say no more. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
And last, um, kudos to the anonymous person who is doing the roof repair on the ice house. I think that is just.
Yeah, four donors, or four donors.
Awesome.
Yeah.
To them, whoever you are, whoever you are. Great, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so, uh, now we'll just turn it over for board comments. We'll go by seniority first, and that's not a swipe at you, David, but go ahead, you have anything?
Uh, no, first of all, to Rick's point, um, VIN numbers are gonna become, uh, uh, common. Uh, VIN etching is already being done on catalytic converters now, and VIN numbers on catalytic converters are gonna come through soon. So, if you get caught taking one or using one from a junkyard aspect, you're, you know, it's gonna be, it'll, the legal ramifications will follow, so. Anyway. Oh, just, um, condolences to the Peralia family, a long-time, um, uh, village resident, lived on the boulevard with his wife, and, you know, uh, unfortunately got, got in a car accident after surviving, uh, retirement from NYPD. And he was also a bus driver, um, uh, recently for, uh, West Point tour, so condolences to his family, his son is the chiropractor, Anthony, so.
Oh. Anything else, Dave?
Nope.
Bill?
Uh, I feel like it's been a very quiet month in the village. Thank you to all of our departments, department heads and staff and everyone else for all of the hard work. I do believe I thanked everyone for their heroic responses to the, uh, July 9th storm, which obviously, we're gonna still be dealing with for a long time. Other than that, I hope everybody enjoys what remains of the summer.
Um, I had one, one alibi before I thank some people, I had one alibi in regards to, uh, information, additional other business, and that is Rich Gayard is moving, and, um, as such, he will be stepping down as trustee on the board, and that is a mayoral appointment, and, um, the mayor intends to appoint Larry Beth, excuse me, Larry, Lori Beth Paleyody, who's, uh, president of the PTO of Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School. She ran for the school board and I believe she is a, uh, a member of Girls on the Run and, and coordinates that. So, that would happen, her, her first meeting would be potentially September 18th, but we have a work session prior to that. So, um, the only thing I just wanted to do was, one, as Rick said, thanks to the, graciously, thank you to the four people who donated the money, and for the spokesperson for the writing that letter on their behalf. Thanks to the special, I know it's not called Special Events anymore Committee, it's all the Dunnyu Committee, right? Thanks to the special, I know it's not called Special Events anymore Committee, it's all the Dunnyu Committee, right?
No, no.
Oh, it's special, it's still, okay, so the Special Events Committee for putting together the, the Movies on the Hudson, that was, that was outstanding, great job, thank you so much. Thanks to everyone coming out for that, and. That is, that's really about it, any alibis?
Uh, just the D P W picked up one more tree branch from my black locust that keeps dropping tree branches right on the curb. So, I don't have to do anything, it drops the, it drops the branch, no, I don't want you to cut it down, it still looks healthy to me, I don't know why it's dropping branches, I guess there's something wrong, but.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, YouTube land.
I don't know what it's on, is it?
I've never, I've never seen it, because I'm always here.
I, I've never actually watched it.
Yeah, I wouldn't know where to look.
Alright, so did we get through that in record time?
Jim was texting me, I wanted to know how we were doing.
Was he?
Yeah, he texted me, because I, I don't think he can tell.
Actually, an hour and a half, that.
I don't think he could pick it up, he probably couldn't get it.